So hello everyone and welcome to tonight's public hearing for the bus network redesign. We are going to allow a few extra minutes for people to join and we will get started soon. Thank you for your patience. So for folks just joining, we're letting people settle in and we're going to join, we're going to get started very soon. So I think we're going to give it one more minute. Okay. Terry, can you go to the next slide? So hello everyone and welcome to tonight's public hearing for the bus network redesign. My name is Reagan Chekio and I will be serving as the moderator for tonight's meeting. Next slide. I would like to note that all MBTA activities, including public meetings, are free of discrimination. The MBTA complies with all federal and civil, state, civil rights requirements preventing discrimination on the basis of race, color, national origin, limited English proficiency, and additional protected characteristics. We welcome the diversity from across our entire service area. If you have any questions, please visit www.mbt.com/Title6, that's Title, V, and I, to reach the Office of Diversity and Civil Rights. Next slide. I would also like to remind everyone of the rules for participating in this meeting, as well as remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. In addition to this virtual hearing tonight, we will also be holding a second in-person hearing at 10 Park Plaza on Thursday night. Before we can begin this evening's presentation now, I do want to review a few technical aspects of the Zoom platform. Next slide. We have ASL interpreters tonight for the meeting. They will be spotlighted, so you will see them on screen throughout. We also have interpreters who are translating the meeting tonight into Spanish, Haitian Creole, and Mandarin. If you require these services, please click the interpretation button on your screen, that's the globe icon, and select which language you wish to hear. At this time, I will ask that all English language speakers to please select English as their chosen language. This will allow you to hear translated non-English comments during the comment portion of tonight's meeting. Next slide. You can also view closed captions by clicking the closed captions feature and selecting from the options shown. Show subtitle will display a caption at the bottom of the screen. View full transcript will display the meeting's audio transcription in a window to the right. Next slide. All attendees are muted during the presentation to prevent excessive background noise. Later in the meeting, we will be accepting written and verbal comments. I do want to note now that there will be a two-minute time limit on verbal comments, so we can hear from as many people as possible. To make a written comment, you can click the Q and A icon at the bottom of your window. When Q and A window pops up, you can type your comment into the comment box. To provide your comment anonymously, you can also click the send anonymously checkbox before clicking the send button. These comments will not be visible to attendees once submitted, but we will be reading all of them and logging all of the comments received. I will also note that if someone does respond to one of your comments, that will be noted publicly. So that will be public. If you do have a technical problem tonight, please share your issue using the Q and A feature at any point during the meeting with a member of the project staff, and we will respond as quickly as possible. Next slide. I would now like to introduce David Panagor, Chief Administrative Officer for the MBTA, to provide some opening remarks. David?
Thanks Reagan. Good evening, everyone. I'm David Panagor, Chief Administrative Officer at the MBTA. I'm pleased to be here to kick off this public hearing for our bus network redesign program. Transit is essential to the region's economy, especially post-pandemic, and the MBTA buses serve our most transit-dependent populations. The region has experienced dynamic change, and we need a bus service that changes with it. It is essential that the MBTA's bus network adapts. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to make bold improvements to the MBTA's bus network for the people that depend on it most. We're considering where people want to go, where people live, and where people work to create a better, more equitable service for our riders. But this isn't just a proposal to redesign our bus maps. We're also reinvigorating the entire bus system. We do that by envisioning a number of new high-frequency routes that get people where they want to go, to new places of employment and to new places of housing concentration across our system. We also do it by increasing service. We plan to increase bus service by 25% across the network and by 70% on the weekends. We also plan to provide hundreds of thousands of riders with high-frequency service. That's a bus stop, stopping, that's a bus, stopping at a bus stop every 15 minutes or better throughout the service day. To make these improvements, there are going to be changes and trade-offs. Change can sometimes be challenging, but we think the benefits are clear. We're building a better and more equitable service for current and future bus riders that better reflects the changing travel needs of the region through a new buswork network that is simpler and easier to understand with higher frequency and better connections. We're excited about this, and we want to hear from everyone here, especially our bus riders. This is our bus network proposal, but it's still a draft. The map will change meaningfully based on the feedback we receive from riders, and hearing from you will make it better. Now I'll turn it over to Doug Johnson.
Thank you very much, David. Hi, everyone. My name is Doug Johnson, and I'm the Project Manager for the Bus Network Design. This slide shows tonight's agenda. I'll give a quick overview of the project, talk about our goals and guiding principles, the benefits of our proposed network, go over the public outreach to date, and then talk about our next steps before opening the meeting to public comment. This meeting really is about listening to the feedback of folks here tonight, so the presentation will be brief. Before we get into the presentation, I want to reiterate a point that David made. The proposed network map is a draft, and when we initiated the public outreach effort for it, we did so with the intention of getting feedback from the public and then making meaningful changes to the map based on that feedback. We've heard a lot of great feedback from folks in communities all over our service area, and we're taking all of it into consideration. That's true of what we hear tonight at this meeting as well. So thank you in advance for your comments and your feedback on the proposed bus network redesign map. Your participation in this process will help make the new bus network better. Next slide. The bus network redesign is a complete reimagining of the MBTA's bus network, so that the network better reflects the travel needs of the region. We're doing this because over the past few decades, the region has changed a lot, but the bus network hasn't. Because transit service is essential to the region's economy and to everyone's quality of life, it's essential that the bus network adapts to those changes. Next slide. Since the launch of the Better Bus Project back in 2018, we've been listening to our riders about what makes great bus service. We've heard that it needs to go where people want to travel, when they need it. It needs to be simple to use and easy to understand. It has to be fast, frequent, and reliable, and it needs to serve the people who need it most. Next slide. To that end, we've drafted a new network that puts equity first by prioritizing the needs of the people who depend most on buses. We've also focused on creating more frequent service in busy neighborhoods and focusing more on frequency over one-seat rides. We're proposing more all-day service seven days a week with new connections to more places, including better rapid transit connections. And lastly, we've proposed a network that's simpler and easier to use by minimizing route variations and deviations, so that the network works better for everyone. Next slide. We are proposing to double the amount of high-frequency service, including increasing the number of high-frequency corridors from 15 in the existing network to 30 in the new network. The maps on this slide show the existing network of high-frequency routes on the left, and the map on the right shows a proposed network of high-frequency routes. Next slide. This proposed network better serves many communities in our area, many more communities in our area than the existing network, and will provide high-frequency service to approximately 275,000 more people, as well as 115,000 more residents of color and 40,000 more low-income households. As David mentions, we're also proposing a 25% increase in bus service across the network with a 70% increase in weekend service. Next slide. Under this proposal, employment centers outside of downtown receive substantially more frequent service, increasing access by frequent service to tens of thousands of more residents. This slide shows how many people approximately would gain access to these destinations by frequent service in the proposed network. Next slide. Fundamentally, this is a better network for people who ride the MBTA, and it was created in part by listening to our riders for the past several years. Next slide. Sorry, excuse me. But we know the proposed network is not perfect, so relying on public input to make it better. We've already heard many comments about ways in which the proposed network could be improved, and we are using that feedback to come up with changes to the proposal to make it better. This slide has a couple of great examples of feedback we've received that is helping us consider changes. For example, we've heard a lot of comments about bus routes in South Boston. We're actively looking at what potential changes we could make there in response to those comments. We've also heard a lot about comments, heard a lot of comments, excuse me, from folks in Somerville, including this one here on the bottom right that asks for better connections to Davis Square, and we're looking at that too. We've received comments from riders, communities, and elected officials from every part of our bus service area. And while I can't promise that we will make every change suggested to us, you will see meaningful changes made to the draft map based on the comments we are receiving. Next slide. The public engagement process for bus network redesign has been one of the most extensive public engagement efforts in MBTA history. Since launching the draft map in May, we've received over 10,000 comments on our online survey, held focus groups in partnership with community organizations attended by over 300 people, held eight virtual regional public meetings, over 10 meetings of our project task force, held over 30 meetings with municipal staff, conducted two dozen street team and open house events at stations, held over 20 briefings with elected officials, advertised the project in multiple languages in newspapers, on radio, on stations, to the in-stations and on buses. And in response to feedback that there were still folks who we had not reached, we recently began running audio announcements on buses informing folks of this process. Next slide. We know not everyone can participate virtually, so we've made a major effort to reach riders in person at stations and bus stops. These images here are from station open houses and street team events where our staff go out in person with materials about the project and talk to riders about what we've proposed and how they can get involved. But we know that even with all of the methods we've used, there are still people who have not heard about this process. So we ask for your help. As we are reaching the end of the public comment period at the end of the month, please let all of your neighbors know about this process, if they don't already know about it. We want to hear from as many people as we possibly can, so that we can make the best bus network possible. Next slide. So where do we go from here? After the public comment period closes, we'll review every single comment that we've received, and we will make changes to the map based on what we heard. Due to the sheer number of comments that we have received, we expect to have them all reviewed and the map updated by this fall. We will then hold additional public outreach to present the updated map. Next slide. Implementation of the new bus network will be done in phases over a five-year period starting in 2023. Throughout that process, we will continue to conduct public outreach to notify riders in advance of any changes being made to the network. As we implement the new network, we will ensure that any new bus stop is accessible, that all new rapid transit to bus transfers will be accessible, or else we will seek alternate routing until that transfer can be made accessible, and we will identify any capital improvements, that's things like construction, that will be needed at transfer locations as well as other locations in the network. Next slide. You can continue to follow this process and stay involved by visiting the project website, signing up for our email list, or emailing us. We hope that you do continue to stay involved and continue to provide feedback, because your input will make the bus network better. Next slide. With that, I will turn it over to Reagan for public comment.
Thank you, Doug. So as Doug mentioned, we're mostly here to listen to you tonight, and I want to review a few details about the comment process first, before we start taking comments, and then we're going to turn to comments from elected officials first. Before you begin raising your hands to provide a comment, I will ask that you hold off until I explain the whole process. Then we'll ask the elected officials to speak, and after those comments conclude, I will give you all the prompt to raise your hand if you would like to provide a verbal comment. Next slide. If you would like to share a written comment tonight, you can use the Q and A feature at the bottom of your screen to submit your typed question or comment. Due to time constraints, we will not be reading all of the written comments, but as Doug mentioned, we are reading and logging all of them, and your comment will be included in that analysis. If you do have a question about the presentation or about the map, you may share it through the Q and A feature, and time permitting, staff will try to provide a written response that will be shared with the whole meeting. I do want to make a note right now, there were some technical questions in the chat. I believe someone had questions about the interpretation button going missing. It is true, with fewer on phone-only audio, there is no interpretation button on that screen, so just as a clarifying question there. And I know some others were having trouble seeing the slides tonight, but we're in the public comment period, so I think it will mostly be listening and looking at Doug and my faces. I also want to take the opportunity to introduce Melissa Delay, who will also be listening to public comments. She's the Senior Director of Service Planning at the MBTA. So now that I've talked about the written comments, if you would like to make a comment verbally, you can press the raised hand button, and we will recognize you when it is your turn to speak. In order to hear from as many comments, as many people as possible tonight, we will have a two-minute time limit on those verbal comments. At the two-minute mark, I will let you know your time is up and provide you a few moments to wrap up your remarks. For those who are joining on the phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star and the number nine. For attendees who speak Spanish, Haitian Creole, and Mandarin, please raise your hand to provide your comments verbally for the interpreters to hear and repeat your remarks. When we recognize your name, you will be unmuted and you may speak. After you share your comment, we will lower your hand, and you will then be returned to the muted state. You will not be on video, this is the format of this Zoom, but if you are would like to speak with ASL or need those services, please let us know in the Q and A, and we will make that happen for you tonight. So, after all of that, I will now like to invite any elected officials in attendance or their staff to ask questions or make comments. So if you are not an elected official or staff member, I would ask that you lower your hand momentarily. And then, elected officials or staff members, please raise your hands, and we will recognize and unmute you. Okay. So, I will see Eugene Benson. Shayna, do you mind unmuting him?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for taking my comments. I'm an elected town meeting member in Arlington and a member of the Arlington Redevelopment Board, and I think this project is going in exactly the wrong way for Arlington and for the economic and housing development we hope to have in Arlington. While it does a better job for the Broadway corridor, the main corridor in town is Mass Ave, and it does a really bad job in Mass Ave by only having the 77 bus, which is the only high-frequency bus in the proposal, but the same frequency as before going down Mass Ave. We need buses to go to L-Wife. We need the 79 bus restored, and we need it on 15-minute headways during commute hours and maybe half-hour headways on non-commute hours. We need the 67 bus to come back and to go to L-Wife and not the new proposal for the bus that comes out of Sims. Along Route 2, where a lot of people also go to catch the bus, we need the 84 bus restored, and we need better connectivity with this, our more frequent service with the 78 bus to Harvard Square. It used to run every 20 minutes during commute hours, and I think we're proposing it to be approximately once an hour. That's a way to kill a bus. People will simply not take that bus if it's only once an hour. That's it. I think we're going in the wrong direction completely. The 54 bus, the new bus, is nice, but it's not a must-have. The things that I mentioned are a must-have. Most people take the bus in Arlington when they go into work. The work centers are not in the direction of the 54, then again on the Red Line and L-Wife, Boston, Cambridge. My time is up.
Your time is up.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you so much for your comments tonight. Okay, so we're in an elected official, so if you're an elected official, please, you may raise your hand, and I see Willie Burnley. Shayna, can you unmute him, please?
Thank you. Willie Burnley Jr. here, Somerville City Councilor-at-Large. I want to call in today just to voice the concerns from a number of my constituents who we've heard from over the last few months. Although there are a lot of reasonable praises for this plan around increases in service, I see an overwhelming amount of concern around the elimination of Route 88, 89, 80, which connects some of the most underserved parts of our community to each other, particularly East Somerville, all the way to Davis Square. When we look at this plan in Somerville, a lot of people see it as a reduction in the ways that people move around our city in service of moving us out of the city, moving us toward Boston. And I have to say, as a Somerville elective official, we are not just a conduit to get to Boston. We have our own community and life here that we cherish very much and would really love the MBTA to be a partner with us on in improving. And so I'd love to invite the staff here to speak with me, to speak with the other elected officials in Somerville about how we can make sure that our services are not reduced within the city, and as said, can serve the needs of the folks who are taking the bus the most. The communities that we see who need these services to actually get around and get to their work, those lines are either being eliminated entirely or reduced, including the 87 and 88, which serve Clarendon Hill, which is where some of our public housing is. So, although I, as someone who doesn't have a car and uses the bus and the T quite
No, you can wrap up. I just wanted to give you the two-minute warning.
Thank you. Yes, I'll just say, as someone who doesn't use a car and relies on the MBTA quite often, I appreciate the attempt to make this more robust in terms of timing, but we must do it in an equitable way that ensures that the folks who need it the most are having their buses stay alive. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. We appreciate your comments. I also am noting, I'm hearing some requests for me to speak more loudly, so I'm going to do that. And we also had some requests from our interpreters that for those of you who are providing remarks tonight and comments, if you could speak slowly and clearly to give the interpreters time to catch up, that would be much appreciated. So, we're still in the elected official part of the proceedings. I see, so if you are an elected official, please keep your hand raised. If not, we'll ask you to hold. I see Mela, Mela Bush. Shayna, can you unmute?
I am not an elected official.
Okay, would you like?
I just lowered my hand because I wasn't an elected official.
Okay.
But I wanted to keep my hand up to speak after elected officials.
Got it. All right, we will, if you raise your hand, we'll come back to you. Thank you for letting us know. Adam Sweeting?
I'm not an elected official. I'm a former elected official, but I'd raise my hand, so I will wait until the other elected officials have their chance.
Okay, I think there is no more elected officials who have their hand raised right now, so I will go back to Mela, and then what's, everyone else can feel free to raise their hands.
Mute. Yes, I am Mela Bush, and I am from the T Riders Union, and I live in Roxbury, and I use a whole bunch, I use a system. My comments tonight, we're recommending that this process be halted and that the MBTA reconsider most of the recommendations that were made, although there are some that we like, like the 20 and the 26 bus. First, I'm going to feature the 14 bus. The segment of the 14 bus route from the VA Hospital to Nubian Station was cut completely with no replacement service. We're asking that you put, do not do that. The last leg of the route leading to Rosendale Square, providing access to three schools and the R and B, was changed, sending the bus to Walcott Square in Reedville. We had a campaign called Fix the 14, and we asked the team to do that, not to do this. The segment going to the VA Hospital provides access to seniors as well as veterans to get to the hospital, and there are schools down there that we have to get to the hospital and there are schools down there that we've interviewed students that go to schools along the Heath Street and there's no replacement there. Just cut the whole thing out. The 29 bus was changed to an Ashmont Loop. Going from Ashmont Station, it's currently running for free. It never went to Ashmont Station. It goes from Mattapan to Jackson Square and connects seniors to food and other such things and medical care, et cetera. The 23, the 28, the 22, the 39, the 10, the 8, the 41, the 38, the 45, the 44, and the 16. I can't go into details because you only gave me two minutes to say these things, but we need buses that are running to to Ruggles Station, to continue to run to Ruggles Station and not just be redirected into the Longwood Medical Area. There's also
So I'm sorry, it is just your two-minute warning.
What does that mean, to stop speaking now?
If you could just
I will wrap up. This last thing that I wanted to say, that in the interest of simplicity, a special trip for the 15 bus route will be eliminated because people didn't understand how it worked and it made the 15 bus route look complicated. But this bus service only runs at 4:35 a.m. and it provides bus service for early morning shift workers to access jobs and for travelers going to the airport for early morning flights. And in this plan, it will just disappear because it didn't fit into what the 15 bus did for the rest of the day. Please rename the route, keep it, and let it run at 4:35 in the morning so that people can get to work.
Thank you so much for your comments. I will also just make sure everyone knows that if you have longer remarks that you would like to make, please feel free to type them up and put them in the question and then answer, comment, written comments. We welcome detailed comments and I know we are reading all of them tonight. All right, so Adam Sweeting again. Shayna, can you unmute Adam?
Thank you very much. And first, I appreciate the opportunity to to speak tonight and for the efforts to increase access in underserved neighborhoods. But I do want to follow up on some remarks that Counselor Burnley made about Somerville. I'm actually the former chair of the Somerville School Committee. I'm no longer an elected official, but I've lived in Somerville for a long, long time. And I'm very concerned about the the potential of the proposed closing of the 88 and the 80 routes. These are two bus lines and I'm not discounting any other comments about other routes that other commentators might make, but these are the two that I know the most. And I ride the 88 daily, actually, but the both these routes are are vital to the educational process in the city of Somerville. They bring students and staff to Somerville High School. And as Counselor Burnley earlier said, the 88 in particular brings students from the Clarendon Hills Project, which is one of our housing facilities here in the city. So I'm concerned that this proposal, at the exact historical moment when we have finally connect, reconnected Somerville through the Green Line extension, we're now potentially eliminating the central routes through the city that could connect the east part of the city to the west side of the city. And I think that this is going to lead to actually more congestion, more driving, more traffic throughout the center of the city. When we built the new high school, we actually lost hundreds of parking spaces and we were told that, okay, we are now going to encourage people to use the bus to get to the high school or to the city hall. And now that that potentially won't happen. So this is a process that I think needs to be rethought through, reimagined to make sure that at the very moment that we're reconnecting Somerville through the Green Line, we're not losing movement through the city of Somerville through these, through these key bus lines. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your remarks. Okay, Mark Millman. Shayna, can you unmute him, please? Mark?
I'll be brief.
Oh, great.
It does not matter if you improve service times on bus lines because bus bunching is so consistently bad and so consistent that the the on lines that already have that kind of every 15 minutes or better service, you often have to wait 30 to 40 minutes for a bus because of bus bunching. Beyond that, I think you, in fact, right now, have the technology to deal with it, but it hasn't been applied. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Alter. Shayna, can you unmute Terry?
Oh, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're all set.
Okay, thank you. Hi, everybody. My name is Terry Alter. I live in West Newton. Do I need to say address or no?
No, you do not.
Okay, so I live in West Newton. I'm a frequent rider of the 553 and 554 buses and I do take the 505 when I have to get into Boston. I wanted to comment on the 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 network redesign. You know, I think that there's definitely issues I have with it, most notably the the issues that were raised from Somerville and Arlington particularly. But I do want to mention here like that the redesign, I think, would have at least the way it's structured now for Newton, I think would have very negative effects. For starters, eliminating the 505 between Wolf Avenue in Auburn Dale and West Newton Station would drastically leave a huge transit desert between that section of Newton. It also would make it extremely awkward during late morning when there aren't any trains headed, you know, outbound trains headed to Auburn Dale Station or in the evening when there aren't any inbound trains headed from Auburn Dale Station into the city. I also think there are other issues, such as, you know, drastically reducing the amount of express buses from what used to be, I think, like five or six down to just one. You know, there's a lot of people who commute in and out of Boston in the mornings and I think that that is not exactly the best use of resources. I think there was a comment about buses that were underutilized. I think, you know, getting rid of this 170, even though it only ran twice a day before the pandemic, I think is a huge missed opportunity. And, you know, I will also say, like, some of these buses, like, well, it's great to that we're having like routes like the 61 and having all-day service for 59 and 52. You know, I do think that the frequency should be drastically increased, especially for the 61, at least the proposed 61 route, since there are many developments that are popping up in and around Newtonville and possibly in West Newton soon. And that is not going to be enough for the time being. And, you know, I think that, you know, there are a lot of and I'm just going to say, I do think like for Newton, I think there were a lot of missed opportunities with the redesign. I think it would be nice to have cross-service from Boston College to like towards Riverside or Auburn Dale. And I will say the one nice thing is I do like the 54 because for a long time, there needs to be an outer loop, outer ring bus route. And I do like that there is going to be a bus from Riverside to Arlington to make it easier to get to Somerville. So that's all I will have to say, but I do think that there were a lot of missed opportunities and I hope the Transportation Advisory Group in Newton can come up with some better alternatives.
Thank you for your comments. I also want to take an opportunity. I think there were some questions. I forget that in this webinar mode that you, people cannot see the number of attendees tonight. We have 187 total participants, including staff, so that makes it about 173 attendees tonight, for those who were curious. Okay, so David Coughlin. Shayna, can you unmute David? David? David, I don't know if we
I apologize. There's a mute button for me to press too.
Yes, no worries.
Yeah, so thank you. So I'll get right to it. Calling or commenting on the 354 bus, it's an express bus that comes from Burlington, basically through Woburn and then on 93 directly to State Street. This bus is scheduled to be eliminated. And, you know, I looked at the overall plan. I didn't do any math, but I gotta tell you, I can't see the 25% increase. But this bus is is critical. It takes people who would otherwise have to drive a distance to get to a bus and then get downtown in that or just drive downtown, which adds cars to to the already crowded 93. There could be some reduction in in frequency and, you know, as opposed to other people, I think if we reduced it to hourly versus half hour, that would be people would just have to get there sooner. But and that would depend on volume of the buses. But in general, I think overall management of the MBTA is is highly in need of replacements. I was on that same bus today. There was a bus driver that didn't even know how to get to downtown Boston from 93 and there's a passenger who hadn't told him. That's a function of management. And this is a function of management too, and I think it's being mismanaged. I'd like to see all of management be replaced, which probably is a controversial thing to say here, but overall, 354 needs to stay and something has to be done about management. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Let's see, Greg Hill is next. Shayna, can you unmute Greg?
Well, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm Greg Hill. I'm a Somerville resident and I'm a member of Mass Senior Action Council Cambria Somerville Chapter. I want to echo the concern of Counselor Bernie Burnley from about the 89 route. This is, the 89 route is very vital to people in East Somerville and there should be no elimination whatsoever. A lot of people depend upon that and I have many, many people I know in East Somerville are concerned about that. Also, I hope there is not going to be any cutback on the 87 route, which is vital to people, especially going from Leach Mar and Union Square to Clarendon Hill and the connecting point to the Red Line and Davis Square. That should not be, you know, reconfigured as to cut off, requiring a transfer to Davis Square. That just, you know, confounds common sense. Also, I've heard from some of my Mass Senior Action Council members that the the redesign looks as if it's going to require seniors to use a lot of transfer with the redesign and, you know, not just one transfer, but a double transfer. And that really puts seniors at a disadvantage. Also, cutting back on the number of bus stops, especially in places like Mass Ave, forcing seniors to walk further to a bus stop and that's not good for seniors and people with disabilities. And finally, I believe that the
It's just, it's a two-minute warning for you.
Thank you. Green Line Extension, which is going to be opening, well, we have the Union Square stop, which is great, but the rest of the Union Green Line Extension running up to, ultimately running up to Route 2 by the end of the summer, I believe. I don't believe there's any connecting buses to any of these stops. They're like Ball Square, McGowan Square. That is, you know, that's, that runs counter to common sense. It needs to be connecting buses to those various stations.
Greg, I'm gonna probably ask you to wrap up, please. Greg? Okay. Thank you for your comments. Again, I will urge you all, anyone who has extensive comments, please type them in the Q and A feature at the bottom. If you have a specific question, we will try to respond in written format there. But also, if it's a comment, we will be reading and logging all of them tonight. So now it looks like Brian Haltur is next. Brian, Shayna, can you unmute Brian? Brian, can you, you may have to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. This is Brian. I work in the affordable housing industry and I've called in to speak out against the proposed elimination of the 92 bus that runs from Sullivan Square down Main Street in Charlestown and ends in downtown. This is a critically important route to the neighborhood of Charlestown as it provides direct service to downtown for hundreds of low-income families and seniors that live along the route and use the bus to get the jobs, doctor's appointments and other services downtown. Removing this route would fly directly in the face of the MBTA's stated goal of providing faster, more equitable service for our most transit-dependent communities. Telling current riders to just take the Orange Line or the 93 bus instead is extremely disappointing to hear. The Orange Line has been reduced to weekend-level service and is often delayed or broken down, as we've seen recently with fires and the closures around Haymarket. And to get to the 93 bus, people need to walk up multiple steep hills, which are physically impossible for seniors to climb year-round and equally as hard for other people during the winter months. Either way, those other options would add 20-plus minutes onto people's commutes, which would further reduce those low-income residents' access to jobs and services. The MBKA has also touted increased bus service in Charlestown, but the reality is that rush hour service would be reduced by 50%. There's currently six combined 92 and 93 buses running between Charlestown and downtown during rush hour. With the proposed changes, that would be reduced to just four. Reducing rush hour service by 50% while simultaneously reducing the bus routes from two to one means the buses will undoubtedly become overcrowded and completely full before it even gets to the last few stops in town. Furthermore, the plan calls for the new 93 route to be extended to South Station and the Seaport to act as the South Station-North Station link. This would mean those buses would likely become completely full by the time it leaves the Seaport and riders trying to get from downtown to Charlestown wouldn't even be able to get on the bus. So the 93 bus then doesn't even become a replacement option. In closing, I'd like to ask the MBKA to reconsider their plan to remove the 92 bus and also to explain in a detailed way exactly how the proposed elimination of the 92 bus would provide more equitable and reliable service to the most transit-dependent residents in Charlestown.
Thank you, Brian. I would like to take a suggestion that I got in the Q and A, which is an excellent one. I'm going to not only read the next person who's has their hand raised, but the person who is on deck, as it were, because I forgot that it's not visible to everybody and that way we can, you can prepare yourselves and you know that you're coming in the queue. So we'll first go to Hala Jidala and then the person after that will be Amber McMahon. So, Hala?
Oh, now you can't hear me now.
Yes.
I'm a Somerville resident and the 88 bus to the high school is mandatory because if I didn't have the 88 bus when I was in high school, I probably would have quit school because my mother did not have a car to drive me, even though she had a license. She didn't have a car to drive me. We couldn't afford it. We lived in the projects. Now, you want to take the 89 bus. Now my mother lives in a different area and she has a woman that comes and takes care of her, helps her out with her stuff during the day, since I'm working all day long. She takes the 89 bus from Davis Square to her house. If this happens and then cut this bus, I can get her one way there because she'll have to come early in the morning, like two hours before she starts work and then I don't know how she's going to get home. So, and we have a lot of handicapped people and I drive the 89 route from Davis Square to McGrath Highway every day to go to work and I see at least a dozen or two dozen people waiting at 8:00, 8:30, 7:30 for the bus in the morning. So please, don't cut any bus routes. These have been working well for the last 50 years as long as I lived in Somerville and we want to keep it this way. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So our next speaker will be Olivia Mullen and Jay Wilberforce will follow her. So, Olivia?
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Olivia Mullen and I'm the manager of the Transportation Department at Dana Farber Cancer Institute. Dana Farber was, again, just today, actually, named US News and World Report ranked number News and World Report-ranked number-one best hospital for cancer care in New England and number four nationwide. We support this unique opportunity to redesign the MBTA's bus network. For decades, Dana-Farber has participated in transportation programs designed to support higher levels of T-ridership, such as the Longwood Collective's formerly Masco Last Mile Shuttle System and Transportation Demand Management Programs. We also provide close to thirty thousand T-passes annually to support and incentivize employees to travel by transit. We very much recognize the potential that this initiative holds in improving transit access for our current and future workforce here in Longwood, especially for those residing in neighborhoods with historically poor access and lower levels of car ownership. The trade-offs involved in improving bus service are also important to us. Any improvements to bus access must prioritize emergency and non-emergency transportation for patients and accommodate the transportation needs of the many thousands of workers and visitors who travel to Longwood by all modes. While many of our staff and faculty travel to the Longwood area by train, bus, bike, and foot, our patients, who are often weakened by treatment, need to travel by car or transport vehicle. For these reasons, we are very supportive of your work to date in conducting a separate study of Longwood to carefully evaluate the complex nature and needs of transportation in our neighborhood that will inform the final outcomes of the redesign. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. So Jay Wilberforce will be next. And in the queue is Nicholas Johnson. So Shayna, can you unmute Jay? Jay, you may need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you. My name is actually James Williamson. I live in North Cambridge. I've lived in Cambridge for fifty years. I've lived in North Cambridge for fifteen. I've been a staunch public transportation advocate for years. And I'm getting to the point where I'm just so disillusioned, disenchanted. It's hard for me to continue to believe that it actually can make a difference. And I just, I'm sorry that it seems to be heading that way. I want to focus on the eighty-three, living in North Cambridge. The area where I live, along Rinjavon or Elway Brook Parkway, is the heaviest concentration of low-income people living in affordable housing of any census tract in all of Cambridge by more than double. And instead of enhancing the only services, other than walking dangerous and a dangerous walk to the T, which of course, service is already being cut and unreliable. The only service is the eighty-three bus, which on Sunday's runs every fifty-five minutes, just to give an example. Instead of improving the eighty-three to serve the low-income people, I was president of the Tenant Council at Jefferson Park. And of course, there are the towers and they're adding additional low-income housing in this area. Instead of enhancing service on the eighty-three by extending the route over the bridge that's difficult for people to traverse to the Fresh Pond Mall so that people can actually do some shopping. It's pretty much of a food desert along Rinjav. Instead of extending service over the bridge to the Fresh Pond Mall, which would be a great improvement for people who live in this area, what you're proposing is actually to cut the eighty-three service to Central Square. People in this area have strong ties to Central Square and vice versa. And what you're proposing instead is to have the eighty-three go to Kendall. People would have to, if they're going to Central, have to get off the bus, go down two long flights of escalators at Porter Square.
And then you're a two-minute warning.
Yeah, okay. And what it's clear to me and to other people in Cambridge is the whole, what you're doing, you're saying you're doing this for poor people. But what you're really doing is centering Kendall Square and the Longwood Medical Area. And I don't see the data to support your argument that this is helping poor people. So I'd say, keep the eighty-three, improve it by sending it to Fresh Pond Mall and keep it going to Central Square. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I see Nicholas Johnson is next. And in the queue after Nicholas will be Charles Banyer. Shayna, can you unmute Nicholas, please?
Hi there.
Hi.
I'm a resident of the Medford area, I guess, West Medford specifically. I don't have a car and very unlikely to be able to afford one in the future, at least in the near future. So I'm completely reliant on on public transportation in the area. So like a few other people have commented, I'm quite worried about the removal of the eighty-line. It's it's one of the one of the main ways that I'm able to get around my community and area. And its loss will be, will make a lot of things just a lot harder to get to for me. Additionally, this is quite specific, but the ninety-four stop of Boston Avenue and High Street is the stop I use to commute to my job. And that stop is is going away. So that kind of just straight up lengthens my commute, which is sort of this, you know, a lower quality of life thing. So for me, I don't have a good view of the larger picture. But for me and in my own community, I I'm really just losing access to services. As far as I know, I haven't seen anything that's coming to the area. So I'm quite concerned, as somebody without a car, that I'm just going to not be able to get to the places I used to get to. And I'm hoping that there will be some room to look at that, maybe the resource of those services. Thank you.
Sorry, I lost my unmute button. Thank you for your comments. I would like to, I know Charles, I said Charles was next, but actually Amber McMahon was next. I think she had lowered her hand early and I lost her in my queue. So Amber, if you are ready, we can turn to you now. My apologies.
Hi.
Hi, I'm sorry about that.
No worries. Thank you, Reagan, for listening to me once again. I was a part of the meeting on six-twenty-two. As you know, we've sent many letters of concern. We have to date not heard back. We were told we would be circled back around. We're direct to Butters on ninety-three Pleasant Street to the fifty-four bus line. And we're concerned about the public safety concerns as well as personal concerns. And also, the frequency of the bus stopping in those early morning hours, every fifteen minutes, seven days per week, as the proposed new bus stop would be directly in front of our house. And I just feel as though, you know, we sent many letters of concern. And to date, we've been told we'd be getting back, getting back to, and no one has gotten back to us. So I'm not sure if that will happen or if we should send yet another letter to Victoria. But it seems as though you guys are trying to take all the comments and feedback. We would just like to hear back from you all, since we are directly affected by this relocation, if it happens in front of our private home with the traffic and public safety concerns and personal safety concerns.
Thank you, Amber. I appreciate that. I I will note that we will definitely get back to you. As you can imagine, I think there's been a tremendous volume of comments. But please, definitely, you have the email address, but we will, we will be in touch. And we've, Doug is nodding, I think, at me that we've noted all of this down. And we will make sure that we circle back. So our apologies for the delay. So next, we're going to go to Charles Banyer. And with, in the queue will be Bill Kreiber. So Shayna, can you unmute Charles, please?
Hello?
Hello?
My name is Charles Beany. I live in Cambridge, in West Cambridge. I am a rider on the seventy-five, seventy-four, and seventy-eight routes. And I am strongly opposed to the plan to cut service to my neighborhood. And this is a major drastic cut. Basically, service is going to be cut from every fifteen minutes to the neighborhood as a whole, to every half hour. Some areas, the area of Concord Avenue between Walden Street and the Belmont Line, is going to be cut from every fifteen minutes to once an hour. If you look on your proposed map, there is a big cap in bus service in the Fresh Pond area. We are too far to walk to any of the other, the subway stations or any of the other bus services. I've lived in this neighborhood for over forty years. We have not had a car for many of those years. We do not have a car now. If you cut these services, we have no choice but either to purchase a car or maybe if we find a place to live elsewhere. It's just, you have certain, improving services elsewhere. But if you don't have bus services in my neighborhood, I can't get to the T, period. This is a drastic cut, and I am opposed to it. The one other thing I would say is you say you want to simplify the route structure by eliminating alternate routes, such as the seventy-four. I think that that is simply an excuse for a cut to get rid of the seventy-four. The fact that we have service in both Concord Avenue and Huron Avenue, that's pretty easily understood. Eliminating half that service, that's what you're doing, eliminating half of the service. I would say that the recent, the printed and online timetables are very confusing. Maybe you're trying to make the timetables confusing.
So Charles, do you want to give you a two-minute warning if you could wrap up your remarks?
No, basically, I do not want to, I want to see the existing service on the seventy-five remain. I do not want to see any cuts at all in the seventy-four or any cuts at all in the seventy-eight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and my apologies for the mispronunciation of your name. So next, we're going to have Bill Kreiber. And in the queue is Liam Cook. So Shayna, can you unmute Bill, please?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi. Hi. First, thank you for your thoughtful sessions on allowing public comments and for staging the changes over five years. I think that that's really important, that you don't make just like a lot of changes at once. I also live in the West Medford area. And so the ninety-four and the eighty are the main transits we use from West Medford to Tufts, the new Green Line Extension that's going to be eventually at Tufts, and Davis Square. So if you eliminate the eighty, not only can't we go further than that, but it means really one-third the existing service, because the eighty runs about twice as often as the ninety-four. And what you'll do is you'll make it so that we can only go from West Medford to either Tufts or Davis Square every forty-five minutes. So we have to wait a while. Now, that's not just a problem for residents. It's also a problem for the commuter rail riders, because there's a commuter rail at West Medford, which brings people from out of town, like Lowell and the other cities. And they might want to come into, I don't know, I don't know the statistics on this one. In addition, if you cut the eighty, the eighty and the ninety-five travel to Arlington. And eliminating the eighty will cut service to Arlington in half. So those are the two, the things that I wanted to focus on. So also, by the way, you're cutting the ninety-six, which, which is one of the ways in which we use the eighty to get to Davis Square if we're not on the ninety-four. You're not cutting the ninety-six, you're just changing its route. And it wouldn't be useful the way it has been. Okay, that's it.
Thank you very much for your comments. I also do want to make sure everyone knows that we are seeing all of the comments that people are posting. Thank you for the really thoughtful comments, the written comments that we're receiving. I know there's some concern. They're not all sort of published publicly, only the ones that, a specific question that we've answered, do you see? But rest assured that if you have posted a comment, we do see it. So I want to thank everyone for the, for the very thoughtful remarks. So I have, up next will be Liam Cook. And in the queue is Melinda Green. So Shayna, can you unmute Liam, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Liam, and I also live in Medford in the Hillside neighborhood. I am disabled. I have a difficulty walking long distances. And all buses in my neighborhood are about to be cut with the ninety-six and ninety-four being rerouted away from my neighborhood and the eighty being cut entirely. I am concerned that there will be no bus connections to the new college Ave stop, which would be the way that I'd be keeping myself employed. I am not able to walk twenty minutes to that station, particularly in inclement weather, with also with hills due to my foot condition. Are we going to be increasing access to the ride and ride services to make up for these sorts of cuts and the way they will disproportionately affect the elderly and the disabled?
Doug, I don't know if you want to respond to that question.
All I can say at this time is that none of the proposals in the bus network redesign are set in stone. We are going to make changes to the network based on all the public comments that we've received. After we take in those comments, make changes to the network, we'll then be conducting a couple of different equity analyses and then go from there. So I can't respond to your question directly about any potential changes to the ride service. We'll know more once the network has been finalized.
But thank you for your feedback, Liam. Much appreciated tonight. So next, we're going to have Melinda Green. And in the queue is Clark Frazier. So Shayna, can you unmute Melinda?
Hi. My name is Melinda Green. I'm a now-eight-year resident of Somerville's Union Square. I, since moving to the Boston area twenty-two years ago, I have not owned a car. And while I do okay financially, I can't afford a car and nor do I want one. I live here because I like being able to walk to things. I like being able to take blue bikes to things and conveniently take public transportation. Public transportation is something I firmly believe in, and I wish more people used it. When people complain about the T, I, you know, with a grain of salt. But I am, I, these proposed changes, I am shocked at the ones, and these, I speak really only to the ones that impact Somerville-Charlestown area, mainly Union Square. I frankly, the, I'm, I understand we have the Union Square T, the GLX and the Union Square T stop now. And along with that, we have, I have, that I see from my bedroom window every night, some monstros, you know, another monstrosity that looks like, you know, Seaport Light is going up near my house with apartments or condos that I cannot afford, as can neither Mitch, much of my other neighbors, who rent in this community. I feel like these changes were frankly designed by our new mayor, girl boss, Katianna Ballantyne, and Elon Musk. They totally ignore the needs of working-class people, of seniors, of anyone that has to take Somerville Ave, has to get, has mobility issues, has to get from Davis Square to Union Square. The, you know, the lack of the eighty-six, which I always use to get into, I mean, that's basically how to get into Brighton. That's the most direct way. And when I look at this new proposed map, what is that doing? You know, is there, is there going to be some dream of some open green space in Union Square? Because it's just going to be cars.
Just want to give you the two-minute warning.
I just don't see how this, it infuriates me. I don't see how this helps people. I don't see how this helps. I live by many elderly people. I go to the grocery store with them, Market Basket. Mark, like, how are people supposed to get to Market Basket? I mean, getting in the winter, how are people supposed to ride bikes? So I mean, I could go on and on. But I just, I just, I please don't touch, for every reasons, for how it is excluded. I think the changes to Somerville make it exclusive and are the most inequitable that I've seen. And that's really just all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments, Melinda. So Clark Frazier is next. And I see Marie Sacker-Richio after Clark. So Shayna, can you unmute Clark?
Clark Frazier here. Reagan, you're almost inaudible. I live in Hangham, and the bus services are almost totally unusable to me. I think MBTA's weakest link is transfers. I think MBTA's weakest link is transfers, particularly at Quincy. Also, I'm on the Route 714. It should really, every trip should stop at Nanteska Junction, connect with commuter rail. Growth along the South Shore has been ignored. The growth along Route 3 where medical and everything else has had no bus routes. Also, some of the bus routes end at places where there's no sidewalks. I asked that the 222 be extended to Derby Street. I think that the Hangum bus should be extended to Nanteska, particularly in the summer. Without, we have to have some kind of growth plan. I lived in Seattle area for a while and they had all kinds of suburban bus growth. We've had none. In fact, we don't even have buses where there used to be streetcars. So I think that they have to do a lot more in the suburban area because there's no way in this area to be transit dependent. And I really cannot use the 220 bus unless I have reliable red line, reliable and predictable red line connections, which means the red line needs to run on a, like a 15-minute headway, not a 13 or 16. And, you know, I could go on and on. I've already commented, but I really think that South Shore is being shortchanged in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Clark. Appreciate your comments. Marie is next and then I see Wig via phone. So Marie.
Good evening. This is Marie Secocho and a lifelong resident of East Cambridge. And I have to applaud the Somerville residents who participated this evening because I'm totally in agreement with their criticisms. Bad enough, we lost Leachmere to across the artery and up 45 steps with no safe accommodation for us, but now the plan seems to be to do away with bus lines 80, 87, and 88. East Cambridge is really intimately involved with East Somerville and a lot of the facilities in Somerville. This is the highest concentration of seniors and disabled in the city. Most of our seniors go to Cambridge Health Alliance. A lot of their doctors are offsite. They're in Somerville or they're up in Porter Square. So, you know, changing your route so that all we essentially have is the 69 really, really excludes an awful lot of elderly and disabled. I noticed that there was a sign on Cambridge Street for the 69 confirming and encouraging people that they could participate, but don't worry, the 69 is intact. But I didn't see any, any flyers or any posters about the 80, 87, and 88. One of my neighbors is blind. During this heat wave, she made her own flyers. She went to the Leachmere Station. She gave out hundreds of flyers to notify people. They totally were unaware of this. So I would listen to the people in Somerville and listen to people who've already written in about East Cambridge. Having the 69 doesn't do much for us. Having the bus from North Point to Kendall Square benefits a very young, able-bodied clientele. If this is about equity and supposedly it was, you're not being equitable.
Thank you, Marie. I appreciate your comments tonight. Shayna, can you, so next is Wig via phone and on, in the queue is Heather Hoffman. I do want to thank, before we turn to Wig, I want to thank everyone for their patience tonight. There's a lot of people with comments and a long queue. Someone has asked in the chat how late we're going. I know it was scheduled to go till eight, but I believe, Doug, we're going to stay past eight to try to get through all the verbal comments that we can tonight. So Wig, sorry to interrupt you. Shayna, can you?
Oh, that's fine. Thank you. Wig, Wig Zaymore from Somerville. Thank you for all, all your work and doing these meetings. Nice to hear from non-Somervilleians like Mella and James and so many people from Somerville and East Cambridge. I did hand, hand in an idea for a bus circulator in Somerville, which I'm going to refine a little bit. But just so folks know, the circulator would hit two Orange Line stations, two Red Line stations, three Green Line stations, Mystic Housing, Foss, and Market Basket, among other things. Next, I want to talk about data instead of routes. You've obviously done a lot of data collection and, and assessment. And I'm wondering a couple of things about the data. Whether it could be made available to people able to, to use the data in a separate set so they could compare it with census? Whether it could be used to do origin destination calculations for people like those on the phone today? Like, you know, how, how fast does it take me to get from here to here now versus the proposed bus network redesign? And thirdly, whether it could be used for further analysis and visualization and thinking about some subgroups like environmental justice or seniors? That's really my comment. I also want, my sense is the deadline for this period of comment is about a week off. Can you just confirm when, when the deadline for comments is? Thanks so much.
Thanks, Wig. I can confirm that the deadline is July 31st, which is this Sunday. And actually, I'm realizing, Terry, can you go to the next slide? Okay, so that has our email address and the project website there. Apologies if that has not been on screen. Okay, so.
We go to the next question. Wig, I just want to answer a question about data sharing. We are launching a project page that discusses our methodology and the data that we use to develop the draft network map. So that will be available shortly and we'll be sure to share a link to that with folks in our email distribution once it's live. We've also created a couple of different dashboards that allow folks to see some of the differences with the new network. And then there is also a trip planning tool that we've had available during the public comment period that we, that would allow folks to see what the new trip would look like compared to their old trip using the new network. So we are making as much of that information available as we possibly can for the location-based services data that we use. There are some contracts issues with sharing that data broadly. So we're doing our best to share what we are allowed to share under that contract and make as much of it as available and transparent to folks this weekend.
Thank you, Doug. So Heather is next and then following Heather will be Tom Yardley. So Shayna, can you unmute Heather?
Hello, Heather Hoffman. I live in East Cambridge, a few blocks from Marie. And a lot of what I have said before and was thinking about saying tonight has already been said by other people. So I'd like to first introduce something that I've heard nothing about. And that is the need that people have to get to government offices, like courts. As it stands now, courts are really hard to get to in Middlesex County if you don't have a car. You, the closest bus service that I know of to the Middlesex Probate Court is a mile away. The, and it is not easy to get to the Superior Court. I don't know about the various district courts because I haven't needed to go there. But that's something to consider. There are, people get called to jury duty and if they don't have a car, they're screwed. Because jury duty tries to assign people to places not near where they live. And this matters a whole lot to people. People need to get to the Probate Court, for example, for lots of things. And a lot of them don't have a lot of money and they don't have cars. And speaking of people with not a lot of money, there is just a general theme that I don't think that people who live in public housing are well-served. East Cambridge has three elderly and disabled housing buildings. And James talked about the many, many buildings out at the end of Green Ave and you've gotten a letter.
Heather, I'm going to ask you to make your closing comments, please.
Yes. The point is that people living in public housing especially need public transit and you're taking it away and you shouldn't. Thanks.
Thank you, Heather. I do want to note right now, there's been some questions about this meeting tonight versus the meeting on Thursday. And if there's overlap, Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is the same presentation we will be giving on Thursday night and we will be listening to comments. So if you provide your comments tonight, there is no need to come a second time. You're welcome to come Thursday as well, but there's no need to come to both. I hope that answers that comment. And some folks are asking about the best way to leave comments beyond this forum. And that would be, I think, through our online feedback form where you can leave comments both by neighborhood and by route specifically. And that's MBTA.com forward slash B N R D feedback. Okay, so Tom Yardley is next and in the queue is Joel Suithall. And Shayna, can you unmute Tom?
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, Tom.
Thank you, Regan. Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Melissa. I'm Tom Yardley. I'm Vice President for Area Planning and Development of the Longwood Collective, formerly Masco. We represent Longwood Institutions. We employ 68,000 people, educate 20,000, 27,000 students and provide care for 2.8 million patients each year. We are supportive of the bus network redesign and we have participated in the task force that led to these recommendations. There's new connections, more frequency in service. And this is a transformation of the bus, of the bus network as we know it today. And I also want to thank Mast dot and the MBTA team for commissioning a study to carefully consider bus routing through Longwood. The, we have unique and complex transportation needs in Longwood, competing for limited road space. Half of our employees coming to Longwood rely on public transit to get here, but over 90% of patients travel by car for reasons that Olivia Mullin already illustrated this evening in her testimony. We're going to provide more detailed written comments and I want to be respectful of the ability for others to give testimony tonight, but we have a few initial comments that we will provide more detail on. And the extension of single seat service from significantly further away neighborhoods like the Seaport and Matapan to Longwood is a great opportunity to reduce drive alone trips to our neighborhood. However, shorter routes typically have greater peak hour reliability, allowing bus riders to get to their destinations on time at all times. So we encourage the MBTA to consider shortening routes that are very long right now with the current map. And also in our experience, the Longwood area is more of a destination, like a downtown, rather than a pass through. We're home to four major healthcare institutions.
So Tom, Tom, I'm going to ask you to wrap up your remarks, please.
All right, Regan. I'm right there. Patients per day. And so we encourage the MBTA to route buses to and from the Longwood area to reflect this point. So I want to thank you all for the efforts on redesign, redesigning the bus map. And we look forward to providing more input and, and thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you so much, Tom. So Joel is next and following Joel will be Juanita Gibson. So Shayna, can you unmute Joel, please?
All right. Thank you very much. My name's Joel Southall. I live in Arlington. I use the MBTA probably three to four days a week. I'd like to know my entire job, my, my day job is to solicit feedback from the public on big projects and to do it in an equitable way. So I'm particularly sensitive to the concept of needing to, to, to design a big system like this holistically and equitably, something I think about a lot. And so I appreciate that that's a part of this effort. I am here to speak for the 67 bus, which has been eliminated from the proposed map. One of the reasons that I moved to Arlington is because of the access to public transit and specifically the 67 bus. Eliminating the 67 bus would almost triple my commute time to Alewife, which I then head into Boston from. So take, take the first part of my trip and I'd almost triple it. And I'm also very concerned that eliminating the bus would make people just far less likely to take public transportation in general. It would make it harder for people in this part of Arlington without access to cars to get around. It would make it probably, and being Arlington, a lot more likely that people with access to cars will just drive instead of taking public transportation. And so I'd ask you to restore the 67 bus to the service map and also quickly wrapping up, just note that, you know, if it were to be eliminated, in addition to using the MBTA less, I would probably go downtown a day or two less a week. I'm fortunate to be able to work remotely and if I do that, probably going to spend 10 bucks a day less on lunch and 15 bucks a day less on a couple beers after work. And so there's a lot of impacts beyond just the ridership that, that go into this. So I'd ask you to not eliminate the 67 bus. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. So Juanita is next and Evan Foss is in the queue. So Juanita.
Thank you so much. Yes, I'm Juanita Gibson. I am a staff attorney at Conservation Law Foundation. And first of all, we just want to congratulate the MBTA for this once in a generation proposed redesign. We understand that the transit system is very complex and interconnected, just like our communities, and that any approach to redesign is full of both opportunities and challenges. But with that said, this testimony is intended to highlight a few issues that have come to light during this public commenting period. Firstly, we want to request that the public commenting period be extended by three weeks from July 31st to August 21st. Throughout the summer 2022, public meetings, we've encountered many people who were unaware of the redesign or who only recently learned of it, many of whom are members of or represent transit-dependent populations. Additionally, the MBTA staff first stated that they will welcome comments throughout the summer. Then at some point in the first week of July, the MBT announced a deadline of July 31st. And we believe a longer comment period will allow more riders to learn about the proposal and then provide meaningful feedback. In addition, we believe that there remain many unanswered questions raised during this period that arose related to bus electrification, reaching Massachusetts decarbonization goals and a system-wide low-income fare, which are three key targets that are related to this bus network redesign. If the Commonwealth will meet our commit mandates and be aligned with the recently released Clean Energy and Climate Pan for 2025 and 2030, then the bus network redesign should include alignment with a bus electrification plan with specific procurement deadlines. And I'll just say three final points that we believe are really essential to this process. The first being connectivity and that proposed route changes should not impede a community's ability to access social services, economic opportunities for each other. The second being public engagement, which is an opportunity, not just an obligation. And we urge the MBTA to continually evaluate its public engagement processes to better process feedback from riders, municipalities, and other advocates.
Juanita, I will ask you to wrap up your remarks, please, right the two minutes.
Finally, I'll just say that for equity, that we must center that by prioritizing high-frequency service, conducting equal outreach and completing a service equity analysis before the MBT board of directors reviews and approves the final service proposal. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you for your comments. So we have Evan Foss is next and in the queue is Martha Padran. So Shayna, can you unmute Evan, please?
Evan, it looks like you're using an older version of Zoom, so I'm going to need to promote you to a panelist and then you should be able to unmute. Evan, you should be able to unmute.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
All right. I want to echo Timothy Alher's comments earlier as a fellow Newton resident. I see his observations as sound. I also want to echo Mella Miles' comments. This has been more than 100-year. This has been more than 100 year time span between the last time the bus network was touched. It seems like a bit of an error, only giving these folks two minutes such peace to comment. I also find it rather problematic that the written public comments are not actually accessible after the meeting via any other means than FOIA, with the exception of the ones that are replied to. I also want to point out that we recently had a bus fire in Connecticut. There was an XC40. This is the same type of battery bus that the T is buying 40 of to stick in Cambridge. And this battery powered bus melted to the ground. Clearly you need to reconsider the phase out of trolley buses. If your intention is to actually go carbon neutral on any reasonable time scale. I hope that the outlined plan is compatible with that. I also find it odd considering the overwhelming overload of some of the more busy bus lines that already exist, that there is nowhere in this plan for any of these lines to be converted to rapid transit of some sort. Thank you.
Sorry, I lost my mute button. Thank you for your comments. Okay, uh, let me go. So we have Martha next and then following Martha is Paula Sterite. So Shana, can you unmute Martha?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great. Yeah, I'm Martha Podren. I'm a resident, longtime 35 year resident of East Somerville and a senior. And I want to say I do appreciate the redesign of the MBTA, but I think it's really wrong footed, certainly as it concerns Somerville bus service. And I want to echo the comments of Billy Burnley, Adam Sweeting, and many others in that the coverage to East Somerville, Somerville in general and East Cambridge is, you know, woefully lacking in this design. I get around on the 80, the 87, the 88 and the 86. And the thought that these will be eliminated only makes me need to use a car more. That's exactly the opposite of what the MBTA should be trying to do. And I think, I have to say, I vehemently oppose the elimination of these bus routes. Whether or not there is a green line extension, the coverage of the green line extension does not overlap with all of the coverage of these buses. And if you are a senior or you're disabled, or it's 100 degrees out, you want to have the shortest possible walk, whether it's during very hot days, whether it's during icy days, it makes a lot of difference to quality of life. And considering the density of East Somerville and the build out that's currently happening in East Somerville and East Cambridge, I think it's really a mistake to be cutting this kind of service. I vehemently oppose the cutting of these bus routes. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. I do want to, I forgot after our last speaker, I did want to note that in addition to the meeting recordings being posted online, we will be posting the caption files and on Thursday, the transcript of the meeting as well as the submitted comments after the meetings. So just to assure everyone that just because they're not visible in this format does not mean they will not be part of the meeting record for these meetings. So Paula will be next and following Paula will be Barrett Steinberg. So Shana, can you please unmute Paula?
Hi, good evening. Thanks for holding the meeting. I'll be quick. I'm really concerned that you're redirecting the services, the new services for the new developments, which will be for high rise and the higher end and wealthier people coming to the area while eliminating or reducing services for the existing folks who mostly on the, in many cases minorities and on the cert, low end of the service spectrum who are really dependent on getting to the, to work shopping by, by using the buses routes, using, getting around town. I'm concerned that there's lack of representation from the Everett side. And at the first meeting that I was on, I had requested, I suggested that the T of Department of Transportation actually come to Everett, meet with the community leaders, a specific groups like one Everett, La Comunidad, the Haitian community. Because this, this forum is not going to work for the, the working people of Everett, to be honest with you. Like I said, if you look at the people who are on it, I'm assuming that they're all, you know, professional members where in Everett, we're basically a very poor city. So I think you missed, this is a, this is an, this isn't the forum for these folks. I think the similar to what some other folks have said, most of the redesign is, is to get people out of the city, but not around the city. And people need to get to the library, to doctors offices, to the shopping centers. And you're basically just taking them from one point to Boston. Who, I'm not sure whoever told anyone, people on the buses want to go to Linfield. I don't know. But like you're eliminating 97, where people are going to have to walk.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up your remarks. We've hit the two minute mark. Sorry.
I just, I know you've tried very hard, but I'm not sure what data you're using, but you're definitely missing the boat. And if you listen to the people on this call, it's obvious that there's a disconnect on what the T is seeing and what people need. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. I appreciate your comments. And again, I know, I know two miss has not seemed like a long time, so I really do encourage you to either, people can leave feedback either on the online form or definitely written comments in this Q and A box here as well. And again, thanks to everyone who has been submitting comments throughout the meeting. So Barrett is next and in the queue will be Julian Wong. So Shana, can you please unmute Barrett? Barrett?
There we go.
There we go.
Sorry about that. Hi, I'm a resident of West Somerville and Teal Square near Davis. I wanted to also echo a lot of the comments earlier around the removal of the 87, 88. I use it every day to commute and to work in Union Square. And I think it'd be a terrible design not to connect directly to of the more popular squares in Somerville, Davis and Union in particular. In addition, I just think it'd be crazy to provide such difficult access from West Somerville to the new green line stops. And also to the high school as mentioned. And it will just, for me, it would encourage me to use my car, which we're fortunate enough to have and just add to the general amount of traffic. I would much prefer to use public transportation as much as possible. But it just would make things too difficult for me and plenty of other people in our neighborhood. So I'll just really echo all the earlier comments and encourage you to keep those two routes. Thank you.
Thank you, Barrett. Julian Wong is next and in the queue would be Charles Hines. So Shana, can you unmute Julian, please?
Julian, it looks like you're using an older version of Zoom, so I will promote you to a panelist in order to speak. Julian, you should be able to speak now.
Much and good evening. Thank you for holding this meeting as well as all the other ones. I think I'll keep this as short as I can in a bus network system serving the city as.
Julian, can I interrupt you for a minute? Do you mind speaking a little bit louder? There's some background noise. It's a little hard.
I apologize. This was the only place I could find that quickly to sit down and talk. Yeah. So in a city like Boston, where you have varying densities all around the metro area, you really need a mix of arterial crosstown and the circular route that serve the neighborhoods. And I really feel like this BVP really drove home just maximizing drivers and operational efficiency there as opposed to doing a holistic treatment. I really wish that there were more aspects to T service that were included in this redesign, including fare tariff schemes as well as regional rail in terms of how that could have played. I definitely think, you know, the Somerville concerns are valid. I really wish there was more, there was something that could be done about, you know, doing something through Cedar Street or Central Avenue. So yeah, for me, it's just, there's a lot I could think of, but really it's just a lack of whole, you know, I know where the T is at. I know where this project is, you know, has its limits and where it has to focus on. But if it were larger, then it should have been larger. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your comments. So Charles will be next and Crystal H is in the queue. So Shana, can you unmute Charles, please?
Hi, my name is Chuck Hines. I'm the current president of the East Cambridge Planning Team, which is the Neighborhood Association of East Cambridge. When it was announced that the 80, 80, 87 and 88 buses were, were being eliminated, I literally had heard an outcry from our senior community that rely on those buses extensively. They're doing things like going food shopping, like at Knack Basket, going to Somerville Hospital, going to doctor's appointments. There's a lot of points in some of them that our seniors in East Cambridge need. I mean, we have three major senior centers here, senior housing centers, Mills River, Truman Apartments, apartment apartments. Hundreds and hundreds of seniors and they, they all rely on these buses. I mean, so many people even use these to go to houses and worship. We submitted a letter to Victoria Iretten, the MBTA, detailing a lot of this with a two page letter, going through the lack of substitution, the problems with the methodology on counting on these buses and going over the equity disparity. Because we're losing a lot of point service if we're seniors. So I know, I know a lot of people waiting, so I'll just keep my comments to short. I know a lot of people have already repeated issues about the 80, 87, 88 on this call already. And I urge the MBTA to, to consider keeping those buses. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Appreciate your comments. Um, Crystal H will be next and in the queue is Emily Lauka. Shana, can you please unmute Crystal?
Hi, my name is Crystal Huff. I live in Somerville and I want to say first that I agree with you when you say in your presentation that it's important to prioritize equity for our marginalized neighbors in public transit planning. That goal is unfortunately not what I see in the plans presented by the MBTA, at least in terms of impact on riders in Somerville who depend on these buses. I'm particularly concerned with the impact on Somerville's poorer households and disabled residents. As we face more impacts of climate change, similar to what another commenter mentioned, I'm very concerned with the lack of commensurate increases in T service. Public transit is an important way to have lower fossil fuel use in the city and we need that. In order to be effective as a transit option, trains and buses need to be affordable and they need to be frequent and they need to be dependable, regardless of how much ridership you currently have. Free would be even better than affordable, frankly, and I would be happy, I would be thrilled to pay more in taxes to provide free public transit to all. Free buses are faster because you don't have to worry about payment when loading onto the bus. You have twice the options for getting people onto the bus in terms of the doors available. You don't have incidents over passengers arguing with a driver about payment. But anyway, others have spoken to the more specific concerns about individual bus lines. I want to say in an overarching comment that I believe all bus lines should be increased in frequency, not decreased. Please increase the MBTA services on all fronts and actually prioritize those marginalized and in needs of the T buses, those with disabilities who need to get around in our cities, those who are poor and need the access. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Emily is next and I believe Larry Feek is on, is in the queue. So Shana, can you unmute Emily, please?
Emily, it looks like you're using an older version of Zoom, so I will promote you to a panelist in order to speak. Emily, you should be able to speak.
Hi, I'm Emily Lauka. I live in Somerville's Winter Hill, near the 89, 101 and 80 bus routes. We chose this, chose this neighborhood because of the bus accessibility. I don't drive. I walk or take public transit most places with my three kids. Currently, the 101 runs every 15 minutes. Combined with the 89, that's a high frequency to Sullivan. Changing the 101 to every 10 minutes, but eliminating the 89 and one seat rides to Davis is not giving us more service. I rely on the 89 to get to Powderhouse and Davis Square. It's not simple for anyone if they have to change buses, take twice as long and go a town out of their way to travel within their own city. That's a system that is not designed for folks who live here to use it. For those not directly affected by this proposal, they'll be indirectly affected. The lifeguard at Lotta Brothers Pool, my kid's summer school staff, our after school community coordinator, all of their commutes to their jobs in Somerville become much more difficult in the redesign proposal. Eliminating our bus routes makes our buses spread very far apart. It pushes them mostly to the edges of Somerville, leaving a difficult walking distance with steep hills. Only the 90 would remain through the middle of town, running only every 30 minutes or better by City Hall, our main library and the high school. That's not enough service. Our topography was not accounted for. These are long walks and steep hills. I ask you to keep the 89 and please consider a creative solution for a north-south connection from Broadway to Somerville Avenue to help the mobility and interconnectedness in Somerville and to connect the new green line stations to the proposed T 101 and T 39, T 39 routes. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And I've lost video there. So Larry is on, is next and in the queue is Quinn Vanderbeck. Shana, can you please unmute Larry?
I have a general question and then a more specific one. The general question is if this is a long-term project, why is it happening now in the middle of the pandemic when you can't really predict who's going to be riding which bus? That's the, shouldn't we wait until the ridership is more clear? For example, if you're cutting out the 505 bus and combining it with another bus, that was very crowded before the pandemic and the ridership is going up. And so if it gets in anymore and combined with another bus, it's going to be unusable. And the more specific question is, again, a long-term project. Many of you know that, you must know that there's a large development project going on at Riverside T Station, housing project, the purpose of which was to try to make it a more of a transportation hub. Previously, there was a 500 bus that took many commuters who drove to Riverside and took that bus downtown because the green line is way too slow. Now there's going to be hundreds of more commuters because of the, the new housing at Riverside. How come then we established in the 500 buses not in the plan?
So Doug, I don't know if you want to just address quickly like the broader planning part of the study and the timing of it, of the project.
Yep. I can't comment specifically on the 500 bus, but I will say that we used, our analysis looked at all travel in the region, not just bus ridership. And while we go through the phases of implementation, we will continue to evaluate travel patterns as they evolve over time. So this is really an iterative and an ongoing effort.
Great. Thank you so much. So we will say that Quinn is going to be next and in the queue is Timothy Hutama. and in the queue is Timothy Hutama. Um, so Shayna, can you unmute Quinn, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hmm, yes, we can.
Oh, great. Okay, cool. Um, I'm a resident of Medford, of North Medford in the Fulton Heights neighborhood. The only bus that serves this neighborhood is the one hundred since the three-twenty-five express bus has been eliminated. And the one hundred on the proposal is going down to every sixty minutes up until seven PM. In my experience, seven PM is not actually even late enough to be usable for a commute. Um, and I'm basing that on my pre-pandemic experience of commuting to and from the Longwood area. When I took the three-twenty-five, I would somewhat frequently miss the last one at Haymarket, which was at six-thirty in order to get back to Medford. So if I couldn't make it to Haymarket at six-thirty, then a seven PM bus is not going to be reliable. Because I wouldn't be able to rely on that bus, I would have to drive for part of my commute or I could walk about a mile and a quarter to the nearest Orange Line Station, which is kind of a lot even in the best weather. Um, it would mean I would be spending almost an hour walking every day and I can do that. But it's a lot and in inclement weather with the hills in the neighborhood, it's honestly really a bad idea. So this proposal means that commuting to and from this neighborhood entirely via public transit is no longer a doable option. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Quinn. So I believe Timothy is next and in the queue is Tom Lamar. Shayna, can you unmute Timothy, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Timothy Utawa. I live in East Cambridge and for the, for the last year and I'm moving to East Somerville next month. Primarily right now I use Route One and the CT Two. So I've never owned a car and I've only ever used public transit, but this is my first experience with the Bus Network redesign. I've, and this will be my third, in fact. I've lived in Kingston, Ontario and Toronto, Ontario. This has been done and where infrequent and closely spaced lines replace more frequent and further spaced lines. Generally, I support the Bus Network as it's presented and I think a lot of thought and data went into this. And I think overall a lead to increased ridership across the city. I'm especially appreciative of how the network tries to take into account the new GLX extension and generally wanted to express my support of the removal of routes between Leachmere and the Union Square stop. To free additional buses for other routes and just to improve service across the system. But I also disagree with certain aspects of the solution put forward, especially in Somerville regarding the lack of north-south connections, especially the lack of GLX connections with the new Medford branch. And the disconnection of Sullivan to Porter and Davis. In general, I think that the current plan doesn't properly promote intermodal transfers and that the plan can be better improved to connect commuter rail and transfer stops with the new GLX branch. Uh, generally, I also support the increase in service and accessibility with the Seaport and the addition of the T-seven and T-nine. I especially support the T-seven because of the interaction with the planned intermodal route that Boston's putting forward between North and South Station and hope that the MBTA will continue to work with municipalities to implement more transparency across the system. I also wanted to express the opinion that though people feel trepidation over transfers, just from my experience with how other redesigns have gone, I generally have preferred transfers over more direct but longer routes. So I also just wanted to put that opinion out there. So I think that's it. Yeah.
Thank you, Timothy. Okay, so we go to Tom Lamar and then in the queue is Thomas Farrell. So Tom?
Hi, uh, the previous commenter actually articulated a lot of what I wanted to say, but, um, hi, I'm a East Somerville resident. Uh, overall, I, I'll try to focus on some different areas. I, I really appreciate the Bus Network overall. Uh, and I think the overall philosophy of concentrating uh much more frequent service on fewer routes is exactly the right philosophy overall while maintaining coverage. A couple of areas that I'm excited about, I'm really excited to see uh some bus routes like along Broadway or Washington being consolidated where there's a lot of total bus service, but previously you would get two buses uh a minute apart of the no buses for a long time. I'm really optimistic that the consolidation of the T one-on-one uh and T one-on-nine will result in more reliable headways along Broadway and Washington here. Um, I'm also really excited for the proposed T-seven, uh, that is basically my wife's commute, where she relies on the MBTA and multiple transfers and I'm really optimistic about the future of these better crosstown routes. Uh, but I wanted to call out that some of these proposals seem to implicitly really rely on municipalities building enough bus infrastructure that the bus can actually run on time. I wanted to encourage the MBTA to more explicitly call that out. Their reliance on municipalities building enough bus lanes and signal priority for buses uh and perhaps more clearly state that they are willing and capable of running better bus services. If municipalities give them enough bus priority, they can efficiently operate those bus services, not let them get stuck in traffic behind private cars. Uh, I also wanted to ask the MBTA to consider uh trackless trolleys, uh, better uh serving communities by avoiding local emissions uh and might be a way to avoid some issues on some of the steep hills in Somerville. Finally, while I strongly support the Bus Network overall and believe it's an improvement for my neighborhood of East Somerville, I wanted to echo some concerns of my friends and neighbors uh in West Somerville who lose access to Union Square and in Winter Hill who have worse access to Davis Square and the red line. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, so Tom Farrell is next with Allison Taylor in the queue.
Hi there. My name is Tom Farrell. I've lived in Somerville since nineteen ninety-eight and I've lived in my current home for thirteen years. I live near the intersection of Central Street and Avon Street and from my desk right now I can look out the window and see the stop where the eighty-five bus goes. The eighty-five leave from my home. I was convinced to move here because I was working in Kendall and it went directly to Kendall. It goes through Union Square and that is slated to be eliminated. So I won't be able to do that anymore. I can hobble up the street to the eighty-eight or the ninety. The eighty-eight goes to two different supermarkets, Davis Square, City Hall, the Library, the Y and Leachmere. That's being eliminated. I can take the, the ninety to Davis or Sullivan, which will become my only way to get into Boston. I can hobble down the hill to the eighty-seven and the eighty-three, both of which are being eliminated. The eighty-seven goes to the supermarket, Union Square, Davis and Leachmere. The eighty-three to Davis, Porter Square Supermarket and Central are being limited. So no more supermarkets for me. So I'll have to have all of my shopping delivered at great expense. Also, going up or down the hill is somewhat arduous to me because I am handicapped. Coming up the hill from the bottom of the hill is extremely arduous to me and I usually have to stop and rest several times on the way up. But all the buses down there are being eliminated anyway. I think that the proposed changes significantly impact the handicapped in the city, particularly in my neighborhood. And people in my neighborhood will have a hard time commuting by T. Even though I am fifty, I have never owned a car because I want to keep a car off the street, but I may be forced to look into one or to move out of the city of Somerville entirely, which I do not want to do. Thank you very much. Those are my comments.
Thank you for your comments. Um, I'm going to take this opportunity to note that it is just about eight o'clock, which was the original end time for this meeting. I think what we will do, because we, we still have people with their hands raised and we want to hear from as many people as possible, but our interpreters and captioners do need a short break. They've been working very hard this evening. So I think we will take a brief break. People can stretch their legs and we will reconvene here at eight oh five. Allison, I will ask you to be patient and just hold your comment. You'll be the first one at eight oh five. Um, but I think we'll let everyone take a brief break. Doug, are you good with that? All right, Doug just gives me the thumbs up. So, um, feel free to avert your eyes from your computer or phone screens for a short break and, um, we will keep talking at eight oh five. Thank you. So just a reminder, we'll be starting back up at eight oh five, one more minute. Okay, so I don't know if the rest of the staff and interpreters are ready. I'm getting, I'm getting a yes. So that's, that's good. Great. Thank you all. So I think we will, uh, get right back into it. We have about a few more commenters tonight. So Allison, if you are ready, Shayna, can you unmute Allison, please?
Hi, thank you so much. Um, so I've lived in Somerville for most of the last thirty years and I'm really heartened to hear the voices of so many of my neighbors, um, expressing what I'm gonna just echo tonight. I live in West Somerville and I'm very concerned about uh the changes to the eighty-eight and eighty-seven bus routes. It essentially cuts off this part of the city from the rest of Somerville. Um, so you know, today, if I wanted to go to Union Square, I would take one bus, the eighty-seven. And with this change, it would take three buses to get to Union Square. It's also really important for the MBTA to be aware when you're thinking about equity that the Clarendon Hill neighborhood, which is again, this part of west, west Somerville, is home to a public housing development and a high-rise apartment building where many, many low-income disabled and elderly residents live. So I don't see this as an equitable solution. So I'm asking to please consider listening to those of us in Somerville and please do not eliminate the eighty-eight and change the route of the eighty-seven. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Allison. Julia Foster is uh next and Josh Coughlin is in the queue. Shayna, can you unmute Julia, please? Julia, you may need to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, good evening. Um, I am Julia Forster and I use ninety-six every day. Um, the, I live in Medford and I am dependent on the MBTA. I use ninety-six every day. I strongly oppose the redesign. The new route will bypass George, Winthrop and most of Boston Ave. This affects many residents, seniors, retirees and residents, et cetera. The new um design means that I will have to go to Porter versus going all the way to Harvard and that will mean an extra stop making my route much longer. Um, also, um, I do want to point out that with bus ninety-six, miraculously, in the past two weeks, I've been taking it and it has been full, um, I've noticed for a long time and once the driver had to set, had to stop people from coming on the bus. On also the elimination of bus eighty, eighty-seven, eighty-eight will affect me too. I use those buses for food, shopping and the Y. And when I work in East Cambridge, I will have to walk up the, um, the College Avenue, which is more than a quarter of a mile and return and have to take the Green Line at Leachmere on, and during the winter at night, it will be a long walk back and forth and it's not safe to walk at night. And that's really all I have to say and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Thanks for everyone for their patience and waiting too. So Josh Coughlin is next and Lena Webb is in the queue. Josh?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, hi. So, um, I'm from Burlington. I just wanted to voice some very serious concerns I had regarding the proposed elimination of the three-fifty-four. Um, I know, I know, which is shared by a few other people here, but, um, quite frankly, I think the decision to eliminate our fast-growing towns only one-seat ride of downtown Boston is pretty ridiculous and honestly kind of insulting, especially considering the T is trying to pass this off to us as an upgrade. Unlike many other communities nearby that are facing changes, we have no rail service whatsoever. We can't just shift our ridership to a local commuter rail station because it doesn't exist. We, we don't have one. This bus is the lifeblood of commuting to downtown from, from our town. Compare Burlington to Braintree. Both towns have very similar economies with offices, a large mall, and countless other retail and restaurant options, similar population densities, and similar roughly eleven-mile distances from downtown Boston. Yet, while the latter has the red line, two commuter rail stations, and a plethora of bus routes, in the eyes of the MBTA, we apparently don't even deserve a rush-hour-only bus ride to downtown Boston. I think the T is extremely naive to assume that the average three fifty-four rider in our car-centric community is just going to accept a much longer, more frustrating, and indirect ride with multiple transfers. Look, I'll be honest with you. I've lived here my entire life. I've been riding the T pretty much as long as I've been able to. And I can almost guarantee that large swaths, not a wide majority of existing riders, were just gonna drive to work. I know some people may be thinking, oh, you know, who cares if we inconvenience some suburban commuters? But this impacts much more than just us. Hundreds of cars cramming into our already-clogged highways, further worsen Metro Boston's already-apocalyptic traffic as well as polluting our air. Also, since the three fifty-four runs in both directions at rush hour, it also cuts off residents of Boston and Medford from a convenient and fast connection to the plentiful job opportunities of Burlington and Woburn. This cut in service is completely hypocritical of the MBTA's-
Josh, I'm gonna ask you to wrap up, please.
Of better connections to non-downtown centers.
Okay, thank you so much for your comments tonight. So we will go to Lena Webb next with Janice Ellison in the queue, and I will remind all of our speakers tonight, if you could speak slowly, so the interpreters and captioners can keep up with things. It would be greatly appreciated. Lena?
Hi. Thanks very much for holding this meeting. One thing that's been awesome is hearing how passionate people are about their bus routes. I'm a West Somerville resident, and I'm no exception, and I'm here to speak on the eighty-seven, as so many already have. You know, so what, I live in the Clarendon Hill neighborhood, and a lot of people go to the Market Basket, a lot of people, you know, are going down to Union Square, and, you know, it's chopping it in that trip to Union Square into three lines, one of which is between Davis and Porter, which is probably like a quarter mile, and involves people getting off the bus and then back on another bus. For me, that'll be like a minor inconvenience, and I'll probably ride my bike to Union instead. For people with carts, strollers, mobility aids, it's going to be life-changing for the worst. I've seen a lot, you know, a lot of people, including myself. I don't have a car, so I have a pushcart, and I bring it down to Union Square to go to Reliable Market, et cetera. And in general, bus routes connect people to far more businesses, local businesses, than does the Green Line extension. And I just hope that people don't look at the Green Line extension and say, okay, well, they have this cool new thing now, and it kind of goes in the same places, then we can reduce these critical routes. The eighty-seven, in my opinion, is perfect as it is. I love it, and I use it a lot. But again, I'll be able to bike all around to the places that will become very inconvenient for me, and other people won't have that luxury, so, especially people coming from the low-income housing at the Clarendon Hill Towers. So thanks very much for the meeting, and I hope you do listen to the folks that have been speaking for the eighty-seven and West Somerville residents and mobility impaired and the elderly. Thanks.
Thank you, Lena. Janice Ellison is next, and we have someone on the phone in, on the, in the queue. The last three digits of the phone number is our nine oh eight. Oh, no, I'm sorry. It's, it's Janice, I'm sorry, then Tori Antonino, and then the phone. My apologies. So Janice, you can now speak.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear, can you hear me okay?
I can. Thank you.
Okay, Grant, thank you. I've been talking to people at the Leechmere Bus Boarding Area and on the eighty-seven, which I take, and, I mean, for about a week now, about eighty-five percent, easily eighty-five percent of the people that I have spoken to had not heard anything about these changes and are horrified. They, they say, they can't, I need this to get to work, doctor's appointments, of course, Market Basket. And some people do say, well, I'll have to drive, but so many people don't have that option. They completely depend on the bus. So I am concerned, for one thing, that, that the public comment is ending in just a few days, when so few people have had a chance to, to sign up for the comment. I mean, I'm sure you've had a lot of comments, but so many people have not heard about the changes and therefore haven't had the chance to, to make a comment. I, I think that it's really important to extend the public comment, and also to keep those, the eighty, the eighty-seven, the eighty-eight, I neglected to say I live in Cambridge, but, and use the the buses and the, and the Leechmere Station general area. That's it, really. We need more time for public comment. We need to keep these buses for people who need them, who absolutely rely on them and have no other way to get to their important things. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. So Tori is next, and then we have the person on the phone after Tori. So Tori? Oh, you seem to have lost Tori. Okay, so, oh, there's Tori.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Hi, got me?
Yeah, got you now.
Hi, my name is Tori Antonino. I live in Union Square, and what, I have a few questions. I guess one of them is, there seems, in, in Somerville in particular, I, I see the frustration, and I'm concerned about those who, who need to get from Union Square to Davis Square to Clarendon, you know, Market Basket has to be a central part of this design because it is an affordable grocery store, and people need to get to it. And, and so I was just wondering, like, who, who is benefiting? Who's, who's the person, the people who are benefiting the most? And I was listening to the comments, and I, and I feel for my residents of Somerville. I feel for my elderly neighbors. I feel for those who, who have ADA accessibility issues, because perhaps a lot of transfers is gonna be easy for some people who are mobile, and somehow perhaps it's quicker. I don't totally understand it, but that's not gonna work out or be easier for those who, who have, you know, who are carrying a cart of groceries from Market Basket to get back to where they live. So I, I, and I was listening to the people from Longwood and the people from Dana Farber, all who spoke in favor, and I'm just wondering, I don't know who, who from Somerville was sitting on this design team, but there, there's, there's, there's a missing component. I'm just looking at the maps from what's happening today to what's going on, losing the eighty-seven, and all I see is the ninety, going from Union to, to, to Davis. And in general, it looks like transportation in neighborhoods, closer connections are being sacrificed for moving people from, from other cities around. So I, people in my neighborhood who need to get from one end of Somerville to the other are being sacrificed because of, of more of a inter, an intercity network, intra-city network. Okay, I, I'll submit comments in writing, and thank you very much. You've been a wonderful moderator.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so we have a phone person, someone on the phone right now, and then Debbie Canoa in the queue. So Shayna, can you unmute our caller?
Okay, the name here is Ralph Walton, and what caused me to, to jump on the, on the hand-waving was when you, when your people said that you were looking at all trip data, and I started to wonder, since one of the main inputs into the system is watching cell phones move around, it seems that that's biased toward picking up long, long, long trips, but may have a, a defect in that some short trips made as shopping trips, small family outings, or, or by the elderly, may completely be missed because, because the per, because the person moves so little or so slowly from, from their origin to their destination, and the endpoints of the trip are, are just not even clear. I mean, they could be mistaken for, for, for the, for a, 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 a fit person just taking a walk or something like that, rather than a, a shopping trip. A lot of people seem to have, have commented on, on, on that very fact that the endpoints for shopping trips seem to be being missed by this, by, by this system. So I, I, I hope that you can find a way to get a, a good, good handle on what the elderly are doing, even if it's waiting for a bus to show up at their corner on a, on a bench and taking it for three stops to, to, to the local store. So that's, that's, that's the sense of my comments there.
Thank you.
Is to watch the, the sampling.
Okay, thank you so much for your comments. We have Debbie Canoa next, and Ryan Eric in the queue. Debbie?
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can.
Great, thank you. So Debbie Canoa, I live in Somerville on Broadway, near Ball Square area. So we're a family of four. We use the bus to get to school and to get to practice. So the, the removal or, you know, omitting eighty-nine and eighty will really create a hardship on, on our family. We do rely on the connectivity to the eighty-nine getting to Davis Square to take the red line. We take the eighty-nine to get to Sullivan Station for the orange line. So there's, there's parts that make the commute in the city very kind of accessible, and also getting to downtown, you know, as, as the eighty-nine and the eighty run at the moment. I do appreciate that we have the Green Line, you know, coming in, but again, that connectivity within the city is, is gonna be missing for me. Like, I want to be able to take the, the bus, you know, half a mile, carry whatever it is I need to carry back, and, and be able to get home, you know, at a, at a reasonable time and not have to transfer and walk a fair amount. So I appreciate that people are voicing their opinion. We do see that the eighty-nine already has a dedicated bus line in, on Broadway in Somerville. So again, thinking of the MBTA, there's already infrastructure in place in Somerville on Broadway. So keeping the eighty-nine and the eighty, to me, seems like a reasonable thing to advocate for. So again, I'm advocating for what's within our immediate neighborhood. I do appreciate hearing everyone's input and how this is, you know, as a moderator, you know, doing great. So thank you very much for having the meeting, and please keep in mind the effect of the connectivity between, within the city, having the eighty-nine and the eighty resume, as all, as well as the CT, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Ryan is next with Yancy Fang in the queue. Ryan? Ryan, you may need to mute. Yep. Brian, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here.
Great.
All right. My name is Ryan, and I'm a private citizen. I live in the Linden Square neighborhood in Malden, Massachusetts. And I commend the effort that you are doing as far as connecting EJ communities, low my, low-income communities and minority communities. However, I have some concerns in my specific neighborhood. The first concern I have is with the one oh eight bus. I ride that bus all the time, and there are high school kids that constantly ride that bus, that rely on that bus for transportation to the high school, as Malden Public Schools does not have a robust bus system. The second thing is, and that's gonna be removed from Linden Square. The second issue is that the four twenty-six is being rerouted to Wonderland, and the four twenty-eight is being cut altogether. The four twenty-six is a reliable one-seat bus route to downtown, where people could access things such as businesses, office, office buildings, and courtrooms, which was mentioned before, by a commenter before. And this is all happening while a distribution center was, is going up in Revere, right across the street from a Stop &amp; Shop. That is a major concern. I went to a meeting sometime earlier with the MBTA, and they were unaware that this distribution center was even going up, and this is a huge impact. My question for you is, are you gonna look at the impact of projects like that going up before changing these routes? Because I understand that this is a regional reconfiguration of routes, not a local reconfiguration of routes.
So thank you, Ryan, for your comments. I think I'll just broadly say that I think the T is listening to all the feedback, including information about development parcels and, you know, key locations, senior centers, et cetera, as they look to finalize the map. Doug, you cannot, if I've said any, yeah, Doug's saying that that's right. So thank you. So yes, this feedback is critically important to us as they, as the map is finalized. So Yan, Yancy is next with Ashley Maggiacomo following.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Yancy Fang. I am a resident of West Roxbury, and I would like to comment on some of the bus routes out of Forest Hill Station. So first, I'd like to comment on the thirty-four and the thirty-four E, which under the proposal are not being designated as high-frequency bus corridors. The Washington Street corridor, based on the latest MBTA ridership data, currently carries on, on the thirty-four and thirty-four E alone around four thousand riders per day, and this is of, as of June twenty twenty-two. This is extremely high ridership among those two routes, and it is shocking that those two routes are not being incorporated, at least for the thirty-four section of those two routes, as a high-frequency corridor. For comparison purposes, the seventy-one, which is currently a key bus route, currently only carries around twenty-five hundred riders per day. The seventy-three only carries around twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred riders per day, and even the seventy-seven in Arlington only carries around thirty-eight to thirty-eight hundred, four thousand riders per day. So all of those, and then the two twenty and the two twenty-two combination, those carry around two thousand riders a day. So as you can see, the thirty-four and thirty-four E have almost, have, you know, almost doubled the ridership, and is not, and yet is still not being designated as a high-frequency corridor. And I would assume that thirty-four, thirty-four E do not have any, you know, ridership that is not any more people-oriented than, you know, say, the seventy-one or seventy-three. So I was strongly encouraged, the team, to add that on to the network of high-frequency corridors. The second comment I had was regarding the thirty-six and the proposed extension to the mall via the VFW Parkway. That section of the row, of, of, of the route would be, is currently very unreliable in terms of travel time for the fifty-two, which is currently on that alignment. Because the thirty-six is gonna be coordinated with the thirty-five moving forward for that high-frequency corridor, it would be quite irresponsible for the MBTA to add, to, you know, add, tack on that.
So I, I will actually ask you just to wrap up, please.
And I would encourage MBTA to consider either ending thirty-six at the VA Hospital where it is now, or to extend to only, both to Millennium Park, and then keep the fifty-two on its current alignment because it's a less frequent route. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have two more comments of the evening, and then Doug, I think, will give some brief closing remarks. Ashley is next, and Halaw, Halawin is following Ashley. Ashley?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you are all set.
Great. So I'm a Medford resident, and I take the ninety-six into Harvard every day for work. I get the stop right in Powderhouse Circle, and I just kind of wanted to, to second something that's already been said about the ninety-six, about how that connection is going to be going away, that's from Porter to Harvard. about how that connection is going to be going away that's from Porter to Harvard, which creates an issue with either needing to walk from my location to the T to then get to Harvard, which is doable. But there are some concerns that I think are overlooked in regards to ridership on the T. For instance, a lot of people might get anxiety when in the enclosed space without exit ability, that like a bus provides that sense of safety. And I think that having the ability to ride that, like a bus route, instead of feeling like you have to take the train is something that should be considered for all people, especially as we're emerging out of this pandemic. So I just wanted to lift that up as a concern. Secondly, I do want to echo what many people have been saying in regards to the 89, 88, and 87 as being critical routes to the neighborhoods of East Somerville, and that they need to continue to support that community. And we need to make sure we're being very careful with our, being equitable to these groups of people who might not be being captured using the cellphone data as the measurement for ridership. But that's, that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. And our final commenter of the evening, Halaw, Halawin?
Hi, um, can you hear me now?
I can.
Great. Oh, thanks for taking my call. Oh, thanks for taking my comment. I am a rider, a regular rider, daily rider of 89 bus, lived in Winter Hill, Somerville, and our kids go to Ball Square, and we walk in Davis Square and 89 bus. The proposed plan is to eliminate both of them, and that's a disaster. We are a migrant family of nine people who do not write and don't have bus, don't have the license or anything. It will be a disaster to not have 89 bus anymore, so please really, really consider eliminating both of them, or at least leave one of them, which is, you know, some bearable walking distance. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And I do, before I turn it over to Doug, want to thank everyone for the thoughtful comments, both verbal and written this evening. I know it's been a long evening, and we really do appreciate you taking the time. Doug, do you want to give any closing remarks?
Yes, thank you very much, Reagan. I'd like to echo what Reagan said. Thank you all so much for your really thoughtful comments on this. We really appreciate your, your input and your engagement with this process. As we said earlier in the presentation, we are planning on making meaningful changes to the proposed bus network based on the feedback that we have received throughout this process, including what we've heard here tonight. Can we go to the next slide, please? If it's, yeah. If you'd like to submit written comments to us, we certainly welcome that. You can email our email address, betterbusproject@mbta.com. If you'd like any additional information about the proposed bus network, you can find all that information on the project website, mba.com/bnrd. We also have an in-person public hearing taking place Thursday night downtown at 10 Park Plaza, the Mastah and MBTA offices, and the public comment period will be closing at the end of the month on July 31st. So if you have questions that you'd like to share, please submit them by then, and as I said before, we will consider and review all of the comments that have come through this process. We really appreciate everyone's time tonight and all the feedback you shared with us. So thank you very much for joining us, and with that, we will adjourn this hearing.